Please rise for the pledge.
Good evening. As our first board meeting of 2023, I want to make sure that we take care of a couple of things before we go into the scheduling part or the scheduled part of our agenda. I seem to have buried it here. Ah, here it is. Our public participation forms, they're up on the ledge there. On the ledge right over here. Uh, by Ann. And, uh, we want you to fill those cards out if you want to address unscheduled audience participation. Make sure you fill that out and get it to Angela before we get going here. And then, um, when we get to that part of the meeting, she'll, she'll pass them up here and, and we'll, we'll take that unscheduled audience participation. But just as some reminders of what the guidelines are. Um, you addressed, you have three minutes. Heather will let, or I'm sorry, Mary will let you know when the three minutes is just about, like, two minutes and 30 seconds is, is when we're at that point. And then, uh, when three minutes hits, we'll allow you to finish your thought and wrap it up, but we're not going to continue to go on for, you know, four minutes, five minutes, three minutes. It's, it's, it's the policy and that's how we're going to run things. You address the, the board president. You don't address any people at the board and it's not a back and forth. And then, um, Dr. Markovich will, will address anything that needs to be addressed individually. And Angela, can you raise your hand again in case they didn't see? Angela's right here. Okay. Mary, would you take attendance, please?
I shall. President Di Alessandro?
Here.
Secretary Hanser, present. Treasurer Schaefer?
Here.
Trustee Reese?
Here.
Trustee McDonough?
Here.
Trustee Summers?
Here.
Trustee Whitney?
Here.
Thank you. And welcome to the new members. We look forward to, uh, working together as a team and, um, we've got a lot, a lot to work on here in a short period of time, but, um, again, welcome to the board. Okay, and with that, we have item number two, the oath of office to those, to our three new board members. Angela Weaver is going to come up and, and give you your oath. If you want to just kind of step over there by the flag, that'd be the best way to do it.
And it would be me also for, um, because I was reelected, so.
Ah, yes. Ah, yes, thank you. Our four board members, as Mary was reelected. Once you're in, you're not in until you're. Since this is our organizational meeting for the year, uh, we have to do some housekeeping, elect, uh, board officers and, uh, some committee positions, and then we'll get into our, our agenda. So first, we'll need to have an acting chairperson. Mary?
I can make that motion. Move to appoint Dr. Vicky Markovich as acting chairperson of the Oxford Board of Education.
Is there support? Support Heather? Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mary, please.
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer? Ms. Hanser, yes. Mr. Di Alessandro?
Yes. Okay. So this is your, this is your board entirely.
Thank you, this is a surprise. How long can I stay acting?
This is a marvelous surprise. How long can I stay acting chairperson of you all?
About 30 seconds.
Darn. Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, next on the agenda is nominations for the position of president for the 2023 calendar year. May I have, uh, nominations, please?
Yes. Motion, please. Uh, move that Dan Di Alessandro be nominated for the position of president for the 2023 calendar year.
Any other nominations? Yes.
Move that James Summers be nominated for the position of president for the 2023 calendar year.
Well, I'm sorry, was there support for Dan? I forgot to ask for support. You were going to support. And is there, did you get that Angela for support? Yes. I've never been acting chairperson before, so you have to excuse me if I'm not smooth at this. Is there a support for, uh, Dave Summers? James Summers, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Any other nominations for the office of president? Nominations are closed. I, this is a roll call vote. Uh, do I call the roll or do you, Angela?
You call it.
I call it.
So the first person, or whoever they want to put as, you know, either myself or James?
Right, right, right. So, um, the nominations came in with, in, uh, with Dan being first nominated and James being second. So I will call for the order of vote first on, uh, Dan Di Alessandro. So, uh, roll call vote, uh, Whitney. Yea or nay for Dan?
Nay, I guess.
Okay.
So, so the, so I guess the, should the motion, sorry. Should the motion just be nomination of Dan and then we vote on that? Because right now, we have two different.
We have two nominees.
But, I don't know. So, I'm trying to figure out, because we, obviously, I, I seconded James', so I'm trying to figure out.
Right, right.
How, so I guess it's just a nay, but I don't know if, if we are really.
Well, typically how it works is you would, once one of those members get four votes, then that person would become president. So if, if you say nay, then you go.
Although we want all the votes on the record.
Absolutely, everybody must vote. So.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think technically it should just be voting for, for you, as we're doing, kind of.
Correct.
Right, it should just be voting for you.
For one person.
For one person.
Right, and then we'll vote for James.
Yep.
Unless Dan gets four votes.
Correct.
Then it's over.
Yes.
Correct.
And are we skipping the discussion part and going right to the mo- voting?
Did, well, it'd be the, so there was support and then the discussion?
I'm sorry, you're right, you want discussion. And the discussion will first be on the nomination for Dan. Yes.
I'll just mention several things, but, um, the reason I seconded the motion for Dan.
Can you put the microphone?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is because, um, well, obviously, he's been acting president, he also has been president before, um, and I think that he's done a good job, um, especially with the situation that we had to deal with, um, the last couple of months when we had board members leave and, and there was a, a lot going on with that and, and he handled all of that. And so I, I believe that he's qualified, he's been on the board, this is his third term on the board. Um, he's held numerous different positions, so he has a vast knowledge about our district, our staff. So, you know, different other things that are going on, not to mention the third-party review, not to mention the, um, the litigations, so I feel he's the most qualified.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's call for the vote now. Roll call vote, right? Thank you. Uh, Whitney? Summers?
Uh, yea.
McDonough?
Nay.
Rice? Yes. Schaefer?
Yes.
Hanser?
Yes.
Di Alessandro?
Yes.
I have a problem with all the syllables. Uh, four votes, yea, three nay. Motion passes.
Was it? It was five, five, two.
I'm sorry. One?
It was kind of, yeah, it was kind of.
Okay, five, two. Pardon?
I needed you to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Maybe we should say yes or no, it's, it's a little easier to understand than yea or nay.
And, and from here, I can't, I really can't hear your microphone sitting here in the middle.
That's why, I couldn't hear him well either because he's all the way down there and the bright, it's so, I, I think we should just say yes or no moving forward.
Okay. Very good. Now, I can step down as acting chairperson and hand the gavel back to the newly elected president, congratulations. And I'm very happy to hand the gavel back to you.
Thank you. Okay. You've stepped down, newly, newly elected president will continue at this point. So there's a second nomination for, or there's a vice president position, is there a nomination for anybody on this board for a particular person?
Yep.
James?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Heather Schaefer as vice president.
Okay. Is there a support for that? Support Erin? Any discussion?
Yes, Amanda.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, Amanda? Any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser, yes. Mr. Di Alessandro?
Yes. Okay. And then the position of secretary, is there a nomination for that position, please? Mary?
Move that Erin Reese be nominated for the position of secretary for the 2023 calendar year.
Is there support? Support Heather? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser, yes. Mr. Di Alessandro?
Yes. Okay, and final position for the wait, we have two more, yes. Uh, treasurer? I'm sorry, Mike?
Oh, I'll, I'll move that, uh, Amanda McDonough be nominated as the position of treasurer for the 2023 calendar year.
Okay. Support?
I'll support it.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
No.
Ms. Schaefer?
No.
Ms. Hanser, no. Mr. Di Alessandro?
No. Another position, another nomination, Heather?
I'd like to move to nominate Mary Hanser for the position of treasurer.
Okay. Is there support? Support Heather? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Whitney?
No.
Mr. Summers?
No.
Ms. McDonough?
No.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser, yes. Mr. Di Alessandro?
Yes. Four, three. Okay, and then for final position of board parliamentarian, have a nomination for that, please.
Do you want to maybe explain a little bit about what that is for the new members?
Sure.
Do you mind?
You, you want to explain? You, you have extensive.
I do.
Background or?
Thank you, well, it's, it's simply that.
The board parliamentarian would make sure that the board meeting runs according to Robert's Rules of Order. And, um, uh, when it, if, if at any moment in time you notice that we are navigating away from that, you would call attention to it and direct us back to those Robert Rules of Order.
Okay. Is there a nomination for that position? Amanda?
I move that Dan Di Alessandro be nominated for the position of board parliamentarian for the 2023 calendar year.
I, I would say that, um, I, thank you, first. I would say that, given the climate that we're in right now, um, I would like to see somebody else on the board take that role on. I believe that one person with too many things to do, this is a team atmosphere, we need to build a team and people need to have, um, positions that they would, um, that, so people can grow into those. So, um, if there's support, then we'll have to take the vote, but I just want that out there. Is there support? Okay. I don't see any support, so do we have another nomination? Heather, please.
I didn't discuss this with her, but I would like to move to nominate, um, Mary Hanser, um, to be nominated for the position of board parliamentarian for the 2023 calendar year.
Is there a second to that? Second, uh, Ms. Reese? Any discussion?
Well, so I nominated her because, you know, she has an extensive M A S B training background, she has an extensive, um, O S B connection with our Oakland County school boards, so that, you know, she has a lot of experience, um, with, with parliamentary procedures as it is. So I just think that she would be, you know, another great set of eyes on that.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mary.
But I will complete this.
Okay.
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer? Ms. Hanser, yes. Mr. Di Alessandro?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we'll turn all the roll call and votes over to, um, Ms. Reese as the new secretary.
Okay, you ready down there, Erin? Okay, so we're moving to, um, item number four, bank depository signatures for bank accounts. A lot of these next things are going to fall under the day-to-day functions of the district. Um, you know, checks and payroll and, and all those things, and, and so we're going to have, uh, a number of those. And then, um, and then we're going to go into committees, so. Do I have a motion, please? Yes, Heather?
Move that all general fund and debit, uh, debt retirement checks for the 2023 calendar year be listed and approved by the board. They will be signed by using the signature plate engraved by the names Vicky L. Markovich and Mary Hanser. Support?
Uh, so, uh, support. Erin, did I see your hand? Support Erin? Any discussion?
All right.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Reese, yes. Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mary, Ms. Hanser?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Di Alessandro?
Yes. Okay, there's a, another motion there, uh, for payroll. Do we have a motion, Erin?
Move that all payroll, internal accounting, and school lunch checks be signed for the 2023 calendar year by using the plate engraved with the names Vicky L. Markovich and Mary Hanser.
Is there support? Support Mr. Summers? Any discussion? Roll call vote, Dr. Reese?
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Reese, yes. Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser?
Yes.
Mr. Di Alessandro?
Yes. And then the final one there, uh, for signatures. Mary?
Move that the board president will be allowed to sign checks in place of the board treasurer only when and if needed.
Support? Support Mr. Summers? Any discussion?
Hey, Dan?
Yes.
And that's, that's if, if, like, out of town or vacant or anything like that, like, kind of like a, a catch-all, just.
No, it, it, it might be very, very, very rare that that would happen. Um, I would say that I, my time on the board, I don't know that that has ever happened, but we have to have a.
Contingency? Okay.
Just in case.
That's fine, I just make sure I understand.
Good question, good question. Any further discussion? Dr. Reese, roll call vote?
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Reese, yes. Ms. Schaefer? Ms. Hanser?
Yes.
Mr. Di Alessandro?
Yes. Okay. So item number five is board committees. It's not true, the, this is, these are the traditional board committees that we assign, um, members of, of this board to go out into the public. O C S B A has a committee that government relations with the O C S B A, um, so there, there's three, there's three of them on here, so we want to make sure that we have somebody from our board to represent Oxford in, into Oakland County. So, I need to, uh, have a motion? Yeah, we'll do policy first. Before we, before we get into the motion for policy, um, that is an internal, I'm sorry, I misspoke there. So that's internal, that's not policy for Oakland schools or anything else that's policy within Oxford Community Schools. Thank you for the catch there. Some motion, please?
Are you looking for a motion with names for?
Yes.
To put for roll call vote? I just make sure I understand this correctly.
Correct. Well, let me first ask this question before we go into a motion. Is there anybody that has the time that they feel, um, they would like to allocate towards this? And I'm going to, um, just have a, a, um, because a lot of times these meet during the day. When these discussions happen is when our ad team or our people from central office are presenting what would change, what, what Neola changes were made, and those conversations would typically happen sometime in the afternoon of a, of a day of the week. So if you have a job that is from nine to five and you can't be there, or maybe you work four days, we can schedule around those things. But you have to be available during the day, we're not, we, we have not in the past had these policy meetings in the evenings. It might be a rare occasion that we did, but. Yes. And then Amanda?
I did just want to add also that with the policy committee, um, part of what we do in the policy committee, um, I'm currently serving on that committee, we get, uh, updates on a quarterly basis, um, sometimes more often from Neola, which is the service that we pay to, um, pay for our policies. A lot of them have to do with changes in the law, things that we can't possibly keep up with, um, our staff can't keep up with legal changes, nor can we, sitting as board members. So a lot of it is reviewing the changes that Neola gives us. Sometimes things are required by law, sometimes there are options on there that the board can choose to adopt or to not adopt. There are, um, there are some review around, um, the consistency between policies, sometimes if one policy changes, it's connected with other policies. A lot of this comes from the service that we pay for to make sure that all of our policies are, are legal and are following all the changes in any state and federal laws.
Okay. Amanda?
Can you tell me, are the meetings on a quarterly basis?
The meetings typically, I would say at least on a quarterly basis, sometimes a little bit more frequent. There may be something in a, in a Neola policy that changes pretty quickly based on, um, federal or state law, and we have to react to that pretty quickly. But I will tell you, I wouldn't let that be a hindrance for the position. Um, that's, that's why we put two people on it, we don't have to have two, we don't have to have three, there's no set number.
That was my next question, two or three?
Yeah, but if you can't be in attendance, as long as we have one person, we can, we can fill that, we can fill the need, uh, the requirements. We like to have two, just have, uh, two or three, to have just a, a backup to a backup, but, um, one of the things that we're going to try to do moving forward is have a lot of people take some roles in here and, and we're going to add some other committees down the road. Uh, and if we start putting two and three on each, it's, you're going to be here all the time. Uh, and that's going to be really tough to, tough on your schedules, your personal schedules, so we want to be mindful of that as well. But no, great question. So, any other thoughts on that? So if, if you, if this is something you would want to be considered for, just, you know, now that you know a little bit more, uh, would you go ahead and raise your hand?
I actually did have something else to add, Dan.
Yes.
And, um, because this, um, committee deals with the, um, there are legal changes, and these are actually changes, um, to the policies for the district, we always have a, um, cabinet member there that is related to the content of that policy, so they can explain it to the committee as to what the changes in the law were, why these things are being changed, um, which is also the reason that we schedule these during the day, because those are the working hours for our staff. They are here, cabinet is here for board meetings, which is outside of their regular working hours, but we do our best to work within their working hours because we need to have, um, at least, there's always at least one cabinet member present at the policy committee meetings, um, and that's why they're during the day and that's why we have staff members there, as opposed to other committees we may be talking about that would be board committees, which wouldn't have that same type of legal requirement.
Will you hand those down to James? So as we fill out questionnaires, those were the two names that checked that box. So if you check the box and you no longer want to do it, or say something else. Okay. Want to make that motion? James? Want to make the motion?
As far as the people that check the box here on these sheets? Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, so I move to appoint Mary Hanser and Amanda McDonough to the Board of Education Policy Committee.
Thank you. Support? Support Heather Schaefer? Any discussion? Okay. Dr. Reese, roll call.
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Reese, yes. Dr. Reese, yes. Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. De Alessandro?
Yes. Okay, that's our internal one. And then we, um, have, um, we have a motion for Oakland Schools budget review. Now this person would, uh, would go out to Oakland schools, uh, Oakland schools on a yearly basis will send us their annual budget, um, that the Oakland ISD puts together, sends it out to all the districts. We have to have a voting member go back to Oakland schools and give this board's yea or nay on that, on that budget. So, um, do I have a motion, please? Heather?
Move to appoint Ma- Mary Hanser to the Oakland Schools budget review.
Is there support? Support Dr. Reese? Um, any discussion? Yes, Mary?
Thank you, Dan. I would just like to add that this is, um, this is an opportunity where Oakland Schools presents their, um, has a presentation and they present their budget. Um, all the school districts are, have the opportunity to send one voting representative, and as many people who want to come to that meeting are welcome to come and ask questions. As, um, Mr. De Alessandro said, the budget comes to us beforehand, we, um, all have a chance to review it, we can have a discussion as a board if there's anything, any questions that need to be asked, any other discussion that has to be had. Uh, this is the representative who actually does the voting.
Just out of curiosity, go ahead, James.
Yeah, so to add or get clarification on that, so the voting is what we decide as a board, that you go back as the voting representative for Oxford Schools, and then if we have questions and stuff, you take those back and get our answers and bring them back to the board, correct?
Uh, that, yes, we can do that. Um, they're also very, if we have questions beforehand, we can contact Oakland Schools about their budget, but it is a requirement that they have, and I'm not sure how many school districts, but, um, this, they have to have a majority of school districts write that vote in order for them to pass their budget, just like we have to have the majority to pass our own budget.
Okay.
Vicky just told us 28 districts. I think she's, she's, she's in the know, right? Okay, um, and just out of curiosity, Mary, is that a public meeting? Like, you don't, hasn't said, you don't necessarily have to be a board member to attend a meeting, it could be any meeting, or, or any person from Oakland County?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, so that's our, any other further discussion on that nomination?
Mr. Whitney?
Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Reese, yes. Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser?
Yes.
Mr. De Alessandro?
Yes. Okay. And then, um, on the board committees, we have, uh, OCSBA Government Relations. Uh, and...
I was like, can we get a description or?
I was just going to say, Mary, you might want to hit this one because that's your wheelhouse.
Absolutely. Um, so the Government Relations Committee is, is not any type of policymaking committee, but it's an opportunity for, uh, Oakland County districts to come together and get updates on what's going on in Lansing and in Washington related to education issues. They usually meet on the first Wednesday of every month. Uh, recently, really since 2020, it's been via Zoom. Um, it's a Wednesday evening meeting, and it's, uh, and by the way, it's a meeting that any of our board members can attend, that one is just for board members. We usually get updates from, um, Government Relations at Oakland Schools, from, uh, Lisa Hanskner or Dave Randalls, um, and they will update us on things that are going on. Um, they will also, uh, update us on, um, action items that may need to be taken if legislation's coming up, um, that supports education or doesn't, if we need, you know, if they're suggesting that we, um, contact people, um, things like that. The, the, um, Government Relations Committee also does set, um, legislative priorities every year. Um, I am on that, um, I'm on that committee right now, and we are in the process of, uh, we have, we have, as a, as a board, as OCSBA board, we have decided on legislative priorities for the next year, that's going to go to the Resolutions and Bylaws Committee and then come to each individual school district to vote on and bring that vote back, and, but that's just to decide on legislative priorities. Um, it's not any type of policy or rulemaking, um, but it's an opportunity to learn more about what is going on at the state and federal level as it relates to education.
So when you talk about educational priorities, this is what the board, the, the OCSBA considers, and, and is it, is it like an action committee towards legislative? Is it support, or is it like, this is what, as a, as a quorum of Oakland County for the, the school boards, this is what you guys have, have come together and is a priority, and then you go to legislation at the state level and say, this is, in Oakland County, this is what's important to us, and this is what we want you guys to focus on, and I, I hate to use the phrase influence, but, you know, let them know where the interest is with our realm of what we, we're in.
Correct. So what, um, the, we set the legislative priorities by first, um, giving the, um, sending to, uh, Government Relations Committee members, these are, uh, these are our priorities from last year. So what do you think about those? And then we get input from Government Relations Committee members and then make any changes or updates. Um, it goes, the Government Relations Committee meets on those again, and this has all been virtual for the last few years, and, uh, a decision is made there, it goes to the OCSBA board, and they approve that, and then it goes to each of the individual boards. We, um, legislative priorities are things like, um, uh, uh, fully funding IDEA. Uh, talk, we talk about, um, school funding, we talk about accountability for charter schools. Um, I'd be happy to share those with you, actually, I think I have them with me right here, uh, oh, they're in my car. Um, but I, but I can share those with everybody, what we have right now, um, but it's, it's, it's public education-centered priorities, so we can all be on the same page. These are the things that we find as priorities, you know, um, setting a state budget before we have to set our individual school budgets, which doesn't happen now. Um, so these are the things that we can come together on, um, and, and yes, and hopefully influence our legislators to, you know, keep the money for public schools in public schools.
And then, so the, the person that gets appointed to this position, uh, you know, just making sure and forgive all the questioning, um, you go and, and you guys do that, then what you guys decide there, is it reported back in a board meeting to us and to the public, or is it just you, like, a, a form of an email? I'm just trying to see, like, you know, so I can go back in historical stuff and see what we've worked on or what, what the, the priorities were last year as I get up to speed on things?
So the, um, now, I don't know if any of those are published anywhere, I have brought them to the board at different times. We do discuss them as a board when it comes to the priorities, because the person who is the, um, the, uh, designate from our board takes back the, um, decision from our board whether we support those priorities or not.
Okay.
So yes, we do have discussions in public about what the priorities are, as well as the OCSBA bylaws and resolutions.
Okay.
So, um, basically, this person, uh, takes the input from the board saying yes or no on those priorities and brings that back as a voting member. And again, uh, usually the first Wednesday of the month, any of, uh, any of us can attend this meeting, um, and take part in the discussions, but only one person votes, and the designate is the person who votes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So now we have the explanation, do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Erin Reese to the OCSBA Governments Relation Committee.
Is there support for that? Pardon? Mary supports? Any discussion? Dr. Reese, how do you feel about that?
Feel great about it, actually.
Okay.
I'll be in Washington at the end of this month to talk to legislator up at the top, so...
Oh, those poor legislators.
Yep.
I tell you what, they don't know what they're in for.
No, they don't. All right, roll call.
Roll call vote, Dr. Reese?
Mr. Whitney?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Reese, yes. Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser?
Yes.
Mr. De Alessandro?
Yes. Okay. Are there any changes to the board agenda, Dr. Markovits? All right. It's funny to see consent, consent agenda all the way down here, because it's usually right up at the top. Um, but we have, uh, our consent agenda, um, the minutes of December 13th, our regular meeting, uh, our minutes for the December 13th closed session, uh, our December 22 bills payable, and then there's been a new hire of a fifth grade teacher. I have a motion to, uh, for that, to take action on that. Dr. Reese?
I move to appoint the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Mr. Summers? Support? Um, any discussion? This one does not need a roll call vote, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And you'll see when we get into the regular flow of meetings, that these types of recommendations, it's either a yes or a no, or a yea or a nay, um, when we have action items, that's typically a roll call vote. Okay, item number eight, prearranged request to address the board. And that would be... Lakeville Elementary.
Hello, good evening, I'm Kristen Quinn, principal of Lakeville. Thank you for including me, my next, uh, to do a snapshot of the, the learning happening at Lakeville Elementary School. Okay, how do I, am I in charge of this? Got it, thank you. Um, so who we are? We are 439 students over the holiday break, I, I mean, this is December. Uh, over the holiday break, we lost, uh, three students and gained four more, so we are currently at 440 students, the largest elementary school in Oxford. Um, and we have an amazing, hardworking, dedicated, loving, supportive staff, which are, were pictured there. Moving on to our goals for this school year, uh, focused on three areas. First, the learner, um, you've heard from other, other elementary schools, um, we have, um, engaged in WIN time, which is what I mean time. It's a half an hour out of the day for every grade level at various times through the, um, day, where we focus on, um, we look at student data, and we focus on their strengths, their needs, and work with students accordingly. Um, one of our biggest goals this year is also student engagement, um, both, and as well as student agency, voice, choice, and ownership. Our learning community, we've instituted, um, PDIS program, which the acronym we use is PAWS, which stands for Being Principal, Having Amazing Attitudes, We Care, and We Stay Safe. Um, we in fact started, did a restart today of that program. We had students serve as actors and actresses, and they, um, they, we videotaped them in, um, on the playground, in the hallways, doing the wrong thing, and then, uh, reworking things and doing the right thing. So, uh, we met today as a school, and the kids really, um, had a great time watching each other, um, do the wrong thing and the right thing, it was a lot of fun. Um, we're also really focused on creating an engaging climate and culture, and I put in parentheses, fun. The last couple of years, you know, we want to get back to school is fun, let's have some fun at school. Um, we've done a variety of things, we have a couple teachers, amazing teachers, Senora Zergosa and Senora Kroll, who are kind of acting as engagement coordinators at the building, coming up with fun ideas each month for our kids to, to want to be at school. And, um, also our, our learning and teaching environment, we're committed to social, emotional learning. Each day on a daily basis, we engage in restorative circles, more as community builders in the classroom. We still engage in the mood meter at Lakeville, where all students kind of check in with each other, um, have an opportunity to say how they're doing that day, um, with their classmates and with their teachers. It's, it's, uh, building a lot of, you know, trusting, caring relationships in our classrooms. And then again, we focus on our, on our data, um, what our, what, what data supports, um, the services that we're, we're engaging with our students. Um, it helps drive our academical, academic and emotional supports. And so, moving forward to some bragging points for Lakeville, points of pride, um, I kind of categorized it in two different ways. First, we have an amazing staff at Lakeville, we have amazing students at Lakeville, we can, we continue to grow. I mean, we're the largest, since I've been here, the largest, um, elementary school in the district, which I'm very proud of. We do monthly pause assemblies, where we focus on learner profile and PDIS initiatives. We, um, students are RAP tags, which you have a sample of our RAP tags up, up on the, up on your desk there. Um, some will focus on the learner profile, being balanced or risk takers, others support our acronym for our PDIS initiative. Students earn these on a monthly basis, they also earn them every week as we do, um, drawings, um, weekly drawings, about a dozen students a, a week earn different incentives. Um, pictures there that you'll see in the middle, a couple of our kiddos are participating in, in International Game Day, that was a collaborative effort between, uh, Spanish and Jim, where they learned different activities and games from other parts of the world. That was, um, I believe from, uh, a game from Mexico, um, that the kids were playing. We have upcoming, and our hands-on science, um, museum is coming, we've done various, uh, contests for kids that involve staff. The last picture there was right from the holidays, we brought back our staff holiday skit, which we hadn't done since before COVID. Um, that was a lot of fun, staff got to be silly, and the kids love when staff is silly, right? Um, I also made 15 videos where, um, I made the elk videos, the elk yourself videos, and they played in the hallways, they're all staff members, and the kids were excited to see which video was coming on next, so... Um, lastly, I want to highlight our amazing PTO. They are such an integral part of what we do at Lakeville. They brought back this year, uh, Lakeville tradition, the Haunted House, which is a collaborative effort with the high school students, middle school students, everybody comes back to Lakeville. This is like a Lakeville tradition that our PTO was able to bring back. We have popcorn Fridays, um, that's a picture of cookies with Santa. I'm so thankful for our Lakeville PTO, and I wanted to make sure that I, um, acknowledge what they do for us and all that they do for us. Again, really focused on making school fun for students, right? We do the hard work, the hard lifting, but we want kids to come to school, and that's what we're really focused on this year, so, thank you.
Any questions? Mary?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Quinn, for the presentation. I love the, I love the term, bringing amazing attitude. Um, so I love that. I, I, I think it's important that, that our students are having fun, because learning is fun, learning doesn't have to be, um, doldrums and hard, because the more you learn, the more of the world that opens up to you. Um, so I, I think that's, I think that's fantastic, and it, it's an important part of learning. Um, but I love that amazing attitude, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We, I mean, we work hard, we also have a lot of fun, we laugh a lot.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, it's a fun place, the kids love my morning jokes.
Um, and I'm sorry I missed the Haunted House, so, um, I want to be sure I put that on my calendar for next year. Thank you. And thank you to all the, all the parents and families who are part of that PTO that make these things happen for the students. Um, I do think that's important to make sure that they get recognized too, because I know that your staff is already very busy doing what they're doing, and I think that just makes it a full experience for the students.
Anybody else? Before you go, thank you, and again, thank you for your time. Uh, you'll all notice that there's been some changes, uh, to our board meetings, and you and I discussed a little while back, and, um, I wanted to make sure it was good with you as the principal to do your presentation here, because it's usually done at the schools. Two things that I felt as though, and the board felt as though was important. The community knows that, where the board meetings are at, because when you switch them from location to location to location, if we have, right now, if we have everything at the same place, it's very important, number one. And number two, probably more so important, um, there is a certain level of, um, when you have people in buildings and they start to walk around, we're familiar with that here. We know, we, we... We know, we, we know that when people go to Leonard, they may walk all over. If they go to Lakeville, they may walk through the building, and there's a level of anxiety, I believe, from the staff and of, I've never seen this person before. So that's the reason why we want to start to move some of those things back here. We love being in the schools. We love to have those, love to see what the buildings are doing, but I think right now for this time, we need to move back, so I wanted to thank you publicly for, for allowing us to bring you here and to do it. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide that information. I appreciate you.
Okay, item number nine, the superintendent's report. This is a little something new, but so are you. Well, you're new to us. You're, you're not new to this position, so.
True. Thank you.
And the, and the green.
Yes, thank you. Well, after two days here, I still want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and work with Oxford Schools and all of your people. They have given me a very warm welcome. They've also not been at all shy about letting me know what they expect from me during my term of service with you, and the work that I see that they've laid out is, is really quite exciting and is definitely, definitely strongly focused on the best interests of your Oxford students, so I, I am delighted to join them. I've been asked a lot by a lot of people, what do I hope to achieve while I'm here? And so I'd just like to go over three priorities that I have so far. I'm sure as each day goes by, those priority lists will, will grow. Of course, in speaking with the board when I first came in and during the hiring process, you made it very clear what you were looking for, and that was a leader who would work with your staff to help them move Oxford Schools, an already great district, to a level even greater. One of you said move it up a notch or so, and I think that's very appropriate. I think this is the time to probably take moving forward up a notch. So we have nearly six thousand students coming, coming to us every day. They expect and deserve the highest quality education program we can give them, and that is our, that is our job, that is our priority, and as an educational institution, that's our passion. So of course, one of my first goals is to make sure that the educational programs you're offering here, which are currently top tier, as we just saw from the Lakeville presentation, stays top tier. And in order to do that, it's going to require continuous improvement. There are still some areas where we have to, to make some improvements. So part of my job, I see, is to ensure that nothing stands in the way of our instructional staff, our teaching staff, our instructional leaders in, in making that happen for you, and most importantly, for our students. Another priority is of course, safety and security of our students and our staff. And to this end, and starting January twenty-fourth, we will be reporting to you on a monthly basis, the progress we're making with the recovery plan that you have in place. The recovery plan is thorough, it is on target, it is being monitored, it is being managed. Where needed, it is being adjusted, and we need to bring those, that data to you. We, you have five sections to your plan. We plan to do one section a month in, in getting that information to you. So more on that later. By the way, you'll hear a little bit later, we're adding an app to our software program that is truly going to allow us to case manage the data around student supports and, and all the things that go with it, including what we're doing in, in those areas. A third priority is confirming and growing the trust between our community and our district, our community and our schools, between our staff and our parents, between the district and the staff, between each other. And one of the ways that I think we're going to be able to do that is to communicate, 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 Erin, communicate. Erin's already been in my ear about communication. And I see this area of communications as one of my primary responsibilities. So to that end, I did a bit of administrative reorganization this week, and I took the office of Public Relations Coordinator held by Danny Stblinski, and I moved that office, or I didn't physically move the office, but I moved the reporting of that office to me directly. So Public Relations Coordinator now, will now report to and work directly with myself as superintendent. We'll be evaluating our needs and letting you know what we think we need to be top tier in communications in January. Prelimarily, as I looked at communications, and this is something I'll be learning more about, I really want us to center more communication, as I told you, on the progress we're making with the recovery plan. And thank you, Mary, for getting us the report from the state Task Force on Safety and Securities in Schools. And we are looking at a cross-reference of that task force, those recommendations and our recovery plan, and so far, it looks like we are on target, but we're going to do a deep dive into that. Another area, I think we have to enhance the channels we have in place for two-way communication between the district and its staff. I think we could have a little better flow of communication going back and forth there, also between the district and its parents, and the district and its community. We need communication that ensures timeliness, that ensures responsiveness, and that ensures transparency. Now, my communications are going to center on the here and now of what is happening in our schools and what we have planned for the future of the district. I want to take a moment to talk about the other areas of communication that I'm not going to be able to focus, to, to deal with. So just for a moment, I want to talk a minute about the tragedy that was experienced here on November thirtieth. I was not here. There's no way I could ever understand or experience what you folks who were here dealt with and experienced, but I want you to know that I have the deepest respect for what folks went through. I, I honor the fact that, that everybody's coming from a different perspective right now with, with different feelings and hopes and expectations. But I am not in a position to address concerns regarding the tragedy of November thirty or all the events that, that surrounded that. Those are now in a legal arena. The people in that legal arena are represented by attorneys, all sides. There is testimony being taken under oath, there's evidence being presented under oath. Those things are being examined and cross-examined. There is no way I or any other single person could possibly relay information to match what is being collected in that legal arena, which is going to be, is currently and will continue to be public information. In addition, the board has a third party investigating what happened before, what happened during, what happened after that, that tragedy, and again, no one person is going to be able to be as comprehensive as whatever that board report may show. So for those reasons, any commentary that comes to you as a board during public comments sections, anything that comes to me from the community relative to here and now, relative to moving forward, we're going to answer thoroughly, timely, transparently. But I want to be on record right now as saying that we're, that I'm not, my people are not in a position of answering anything from that past event. So we have lots of good work ahead of us, and I'm excited to be here to, to help your folks deal with it, and I just thank you again for inviting me into the Oxford family. It's a great community, great school system. I'm glad to be here for, for the time I'm here.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so we have a, a few Board of Education matters. Two thousand twenty-three Board of Education Leadership Code, Board of Education Meetings Schedule, which I kind of touched upon a little bit, Conflict of Interest Form Reminder, recognition, recognition of Anita. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody, I think, has filled out those forms. Your Leadership Code was something that we will, as a board, sign. The Board of Education Meeting Schedule you all should have. If not, it's, it's posted on our website. Now, just a point of reference, we don't go calendar year. So when you see the schedule, it'll end in June twenty-seventh to twenty-three, and some districts organizational meeting, they set the board agenda or the board calendar for the entire year. We, like quite a few other districts, do it on a school year. So that school year would run from June, I'm sorry, July first through June thirtieth, and that revolves every, every calendar year. So that's, that is when we set our, our, our meeting calendar. And then I think you all filled out your, your Conflict of Interest Form. If you didn't, you do have them all?
No. Keep going. If you want to write that.
If you didn't fill it out, see Angela, and she will make sure you get one. And it's, it's really, it's maybe what, four or five questions? It's, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. And then, item D under, under ten is want to recognize the time that Anita gave to the district, and, and I just, I want to make a mo, I want to just read this real quick. I'd like to recommend a motion recognizing Anita for her exemplary service to Oxford Schools as Acting Superintendent. She did a great job as Acting Superintendent and filled a critical need during our search for an interim, interim superintendent. With the interim superintendent taking office January ninth, Anita has returned to her position with an, as an Assistant Superintendent and to the salary conducted, and to the salary contracted for that position. And on behalf of the board, I would like to thank you for the time that you spent mostly over the holidays, answering questions and dealing with the, the load that was bestowed upon you, not really bestowed. You, you really dug in and, and really ran with it. So I sincerely appreciate what you've done for our district. And there is a recommendation for action. Would somebody like to read that? Mary?
Move to recognize Anita Conja Collins for her exemplary service to Oxford Community Schools as Acting Superintendent and her return to her position as Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Instruction and to the salary contracted for the position.
Is there support? Support? Heather? Any discussion? Mary?
Thank you, Anita, for stepping up when we needed you, and thank you for your service to this district. We're, we're really grateful to have you in Oxford. Thank you.
Heather?
I wanted to thank you as well, Anita. It was a very, very smooth transition in a time where there was a lot of upheaval with losing board members, Ken's resignation. It wasn't an easy move, but you made it just effortless. And, and I think the central office staff, from anybody I talked to, was so grateful for your time and honored to work with you. And you showed great leadership, and we're very proud of you, and we thank you very much.
Anybody else? So Anita, one of the great things about a leader is knowing what you're really good at. Even though you might be really good at this, you knew what your passion is, you know what your passion is, and it just solidified in my mind the quality of people and the quality of person that you are. You could have been very easily said, I'll accept the challenge and be your next superintendent as we had that conversation, and you flat out said, I'm really passionate about what I do. And that takes a lot, because people given the opportunity would have just jumped at it, and you really put this district in front of your own personal benefit, and I appreciate that. So thank you. Anybody else?
I know I'm not going to get to vote. I know I'm not.
Going to get to vote, but I have to tell you, having coming in and picking up the ball that Anita has carried, she has made my arrival, well, not easy, but she's made my arrival very smooth. I, I am, am going to keep her very close to me. She has definitely served you well, but she's definitely set up the T for us to continue moving, so there's going to be no step lost in, in moving forward, and, and I want to also thank you, Anita. And, and I'm going to work with you real hard to change your mind about that superintendent's job.
I think there's going to be a little two-year-old boy that'll change her mind real fast.
I know, but, you know, maybe.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Item E under nine, or under ten is committee, committee discussions. So there's been a conversation, gosh, Heather, you might want to fill me in on how long this conversation's gone back and forth.
Couple years.
Couple years, about board members being involved in, in, in different committees or sitting as a silent observer in, in some of the discussions so that we have a better understanding of, of kind of what's going on in different areas of the district. As we have discussed it back and forth over that period of couple of years, it just became more and more apparent to me that that's a really good idea. It's something that not only would board members like to, to step into that realm, but I, I believe that we, we need to do that on behalf of, of our community when those conversations are being had. We at least have somebody sitting in that room that is listening to what's going on, and I want to emphasize that listening. Really, the, the two things that a board member does is they hire a superintendent and they set policy, and we have two people on that policy committee, and that's really the work that they're going to do, and they're going to have those discussions back and forth. But when it comes to the, the work that's being done on a day-to-day, the safety and security of, 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 of our district, what are some of the other ones that we discussed? Communication, there's, there's a vast number of them. We wanted to have some ears in the room to make sure that we're not hearing it for the first time when it comes to the board. If there's something that's a glaring thing that a person sitting on the committee would say, that's probably counterintuitive to what we were discussing at a board meeting. We want to have that. Finance was one of them, as I look over there at Sam. Finance was one area that we really need to make sure that we're keeping our, our thumb on as well, so. I want to make sure that, that we get this handled fairly quickly. So that said, is there anybody that would like to add to what I just said?
Sorry.
We'll go, we'll go with Dr. Reese and then James.
Yeah, so, sitting in this role, you know, is not a day-to-day operational role. And the committees would not be the day-to-day operations, but I think it's important that there are some things that we set up so that way, first, we know how to eloquently speak to some of these topics that are being discussed. There's a lot of things that have occurred, obviously, within the district. There's a lot of changing legislation that's come down that affects some of it, and, you know, when I look at the list of committees that other districts have, some are way more robust, some is, at the end of the day, it's a reminder that it's a seven-person team and no single committee can approve anything. It's more or less a recommendation, and to have someone that can eloquently speak to it at the same level as cabinet, so there's a dyad of some sort when it comes to those presentations. With that being said, you know, looking at the list of committees, I know I had thrown some out at a meeting, gosh, I think late October, early November. I think at this point, the one that I think I'd be more, the most comfortable with recommending that we move forward now versus maybe waiting for Dr. Mark. that we move forward now versus maybe waiting for Dr. Markovich to finesse some of the things. As, you know, I recall, and she already mentioned, communications is a passion of mine. It was a reason why I stepped up to this position, being appointed versus elected, is because I'm also a parent in this district as long as a community member that votes. So I would like to see her step forward and do some of those changes prior to putting in a Board Committee for Communications. But I do think that finance is something that is near and dear to my heart. I don't want, we have a very healthy district. I know Sam and all of his team do a wonderful job. And I'd like, you know, for there to be something to talk about, especially with the appropriations that have come through in the last year. And I think there probably be more appropriations that may come in the future, so.
Okay.
Not just for us, but for all of public school education.
Okay. Yes. Well, let's go to James. My memory's not that bad yet. Go ahead.
We'll get there. We'll see how it's zeroed. So I know we talked about it, I guess more of a general question, formalized list? Are we looking for suggestions of stuff? So, in listening to Dr. Aaron down there speak, you know, I have a background in law enforcement and so safety and security definitely first and foremost I'd be interested in, as well as technology and stuff. Being as, you know, we move forward and technology's ever-changing, there's many times new things come up inside for the district and stuff. And just to be able to sit in some of those meetings to make sure, you know, from a budgeting and fiscal and responsibility that, you know, years on of what we're spending money on and stuff. And then that way, if there's questions and we look at things, you know, again, back where we can talk intelligently about it and have an understanding of what it's for. So that would be my interest with that kind of stuff. I know it's a listening in, but, you know, it's definitely, I think it's an area where we spend a great deal of money. And there's sometimes, as I've sat in the audience and wondered questions of, "Well, why are we doing this?" Because we just had, you know, a couple of years ago, something that was supposed to do the exact same thing. Why are we spending money on something brand-new? What happened to the other stuff? Is it not a good return on our investment? Are we not doing, you know, a good job of educating people that's using the technology? Or did it not work and stuff? So, you know.
And sometimes those spill over. You know, you could be in technology and then all of a sudden say, "Well, there's different technology that may or may not cost as much." It may be cost savings. So when we're sitting in those meetings, my original thought was, as we're sitting in those meetings, you can say, "Well, you know, hey, let's take a look at this software. It does very similar things." And then you, you know, you would bring it back to the superintendent. The superintendent would flush that out and say, "Okay, well, here are some different ideas."
Well, especially around the safety stuff that we've gone through in the last six months of different systems that we put in place and making sure that it's not one-off stuff. So it's going to be there for the long haul and it's going to communicate together. And, I mean, I know it sounds goofy, but they kind of go hand-in-hand in a lot of cases with that stuff. So that was my comments about, and voice interest in those areas.
Amanda, and then we'll come back to Aaron.
I would also like to discuss a governance committee. A committee that would essentially be in charge of onboarding new Board members, getting them up to speed, potentially taking questions from all new Board members, compiling a list of, you know, FAQ of some sort for new Board members. I think that we all have and had a lot of questions that still remain unanswered. And a governance committee would really help that process along, as well as exit interviews and things like that for when Board members are transitioning out and new ones transitioning in.
Make sure I understand exit interviews, meaning of Board members as they leave or?
Right, to gain information that could potentially help future new Board members.
Okay. All right, and there was also one that we discussed as far as the potential of, like, somebody, human resources. So there's all different facets that we need to kind of really think of. Things that help our district run. Again, not that we're making decisions, but we're actually putting, we're giving input to the superintendent. The superintendent then brings it back to Cabinet and said, "Let's take a look at these things." Aaron, did I see you have your hand up or was that just out of the corner of my eye? No? Dr. Rocker?
I did, but I don't want to speak before any Board members.
Anybody else? Mary?
Thank you. I think it's important, when we talk about this, to know what the goal is. Because we need to be really careful, as a Board, to not get involved in the day-to-day operations. Because there's, because we are not educators. We are not, we're, and it's not our job to do that. I know myself that I, when I see, and I'm not necessarily a specialist, but when I see interesting things happening in the world of education, I send them to the superintendent as, "I saw this, this looks interesting." And I copy the Board President. And that's all I do because it's up to the superintendent to review those things. It's not for the Board to necessarily make recommendations on specific items. There's input, but that is, again, with the superintendent. So I just want to be sure that we're really careful and that we stay in our lane. Because I'm seeing these, you know, committees as Board committees as opposed to being a part of group, work groups that are already happening, maybe on the Cabinet or staff level. Because that's not our role as Board members, to be talking to staff in meetings about what they're doing. That's not our job. Our employees, the superintendent. So I want to, just want to be sure that we stay in that lane. For me, the committees are about learning more about what is going on and why we are doing things, like the technology. So, you know, you are interested in that and you know things, so why are we doing it this way? Because, you know, I can't come into the district and think that something should be done differently in that or, you know, in any other area. Because I don't, my job is to know how that affects all the different places. So I might think something's a really great idea and we should be doing something, but what I don't know is what other pieces that affects. And so that's, it's important that we're not trying to give advice to staff. But, like, when it comes to things like finance, I am really interested in what it is that the appropriations coming in and how are we measuring their effectiveness? Because we need to look to the future to see where we're going to be investing money in the future when that money's gone. So for me, it's about taking a deeper dive and maybe having committees, Board committees, as opposed to necessarily being in meetings with staff. I just want to be careful that we're staying in our lane. Yeah.
The superintendent. And if you don't mind, I'll just share my thoughts with you. I agree, a finance committee is very typical. A finance committee is, does not necessarily sit in on the budget development, but a finance committee would certainly review the budget development and speak with the administrators who developed it, as an example, prior to it coming to the Board. The nitty-gritty work of how that's developed and how the spreadsheets we put out there and the information packet for the Board is obviously something you pay staff to do. And the staff working for you are your full-time employees. I mean, just as those of you who are working spend 40 to 60 hours a week at your jobs, those of us that are here doing a job for you spend 40 to 60 hours a week doing that job and researching it. Thank you, Aaron, for giving me and the staff an opportunity to flesh out the communication plans before bringing in, before thinking about the need for any kind of committee on that. Some of the things I heard about are committee-type things, like finance. It's not usual to have a safety, security committee in a district, but in this particular district, at this particular time, that might be. Typically, that comes under a facilities kind of committee, but I can see where that might have some relevance. Some of the other things you mentioned are important for you to know about, but they're single individual items that probably have a more narrow focus. Such as, you know, I think the governance committee and the onboarding and the preparing something for new Board members is a critical thing to do. But that is something you and I could sit down with a couple of people. And in fact, I've developed onboarding packets many times in my former life as superintendents in other places. And you see, once that's done, other than reviewing it every year and updating it, it's really not an ongoing committee kind of thing, but it's an important thing to do. So that would be the kind of thing you would bring to me. And I would determine whether we could or couldn't and then pull together a group of people to help deliver that and then present it to the Board. Another area that's pretty narrow is, again, the technology. I think that, and when you talk about cost, technology is a major portion of that. But it is so wide and expansive across a district like this that it would be easier to, if you had a concern or a question or a thought or if you wanted to know more about the technology we have in the district, that's, again, kind of an individual request of the superintendent. We pull together the right people, the right information. We brief you, you see how it sets to you, and then you talk to me about it. And if you think there's a problem, then we know how to process that problem through appropriate staff people. If you have an idea, we know how to process that idea through staff people. I mean, all of us is smarter than any one of us. So information from people is something that, we're an educational institution, why would we not want as much information as we could possibly connect? Human resources is a, that is a very difficult committee for a Board to have or be on because your human resources department is sometimes going to be bringing you personnel issues that you will not be able to have any access to prior to what you hear at a Board table that's going to prompt a Board decision. So that is, I don't know if there's districts who have that committees. And if, I've not heard of any, I've never been in one that's had a human resources committee. But again, questions about our human resources processes, protocols, you know, you approved a hiring of an employee tonight. It would be very typical for one of you or two of you or some of you to call me up tomorrow or catch me on the way out and say, "You know, what's the process we use for hiring people? What's the reference check we do? How do we make sure of licensing?" And those kinds of things are more individual pieces of, that we would have interaction about, I think to your satisfaction, rather than an ongoing committee. So that's what I can speak to you about in terms of experience. And those of you who have been on the Board for quite a while and are familiar with other Boards, if there's anything that I've misrepresented, please, please correct me. But I think, so that's my two cents.
What I, what we should aim to do is, between the seven of us and the superintendent, is identify which ones would be appropriate for us to have, to move forward and have a discussion and even an appointment. We should be aiming towards having this nailed down by our next meeting. It has been a two-year-long process. It shouldn't go on much longer. So I think if you have the opportunity to send us an email.
I will.
And give us ones that, you know, if you think about it. We meet again on the 24th of January. I think the Board would welcome something maybe seven days prior to that.
You know, I'll be able to send it right away because, looking at the list, as I've said tonight, finance and safety and security are the two that I think are critical to add right now. And my recommendation will be to wait on the others until you see how things flush out and you have a little more experience on the Board. And add those two to your policy committee. That's going to take six of you right there. So it's pretty hard to have more.
Okay.
But I will put that in a memo form and I will get that out to you this week.
And then, and then?
If somebody feels very strongly about something in addition to that.
They could let me know.
They should let Vicki know.
Yes.
Via email. And then maybe the two of you.
Right.
Can discuss it and then we can come more, come back on the 24th, a little bit more prepared for any additional discussion and then move to make some motions to put a committee into place.
Amanda, did you hit all the ones that you had sent? I think those, hit them all, but there were a couple that you had sent. I just want to make sure that we at least get them out and open. Okay. Okay. Item number 11, curriculum and instruction. We have the revised district course catalog. And then, yep. Mr. Wolf?
Good evening. Hello? Wanted to take a moment to review our request to edit our district course catalog and just provide some background while we're seeking approval for those edits. So the MDE Office of Financial Management performed an annual quality control review through open schools. And that was done here this fall, October, regarding count date. That includes all districts and schools, including Oxford Community Schools. And when reviewing our Oxford Virtual Academy within Oxford, MDE had no specific findings, which is the good news. That's likely because we've built a pretty strong relationship with open schools. They have a pretty good understanding of the academy, as well as the control process for accounting student membership. But they did have a recommendation. And so the MDE auditor recommended making our community vendor elective courses, which would fall within our optional learning for students in the district, making it a little clearer to all Oxford families, not just our Oxford Virtual students. And so therefore, we're looking for approval to edit the OVA course catalog, but also the district course catalog, which would include our seated buildings, the elementary schools, the middle school and the high school, and make sure those are updated. And having each of those include a link to the community vendor elective courses, as well as the time, the location of where they are at. Making sure that our traditional full-time seated students have more clear access and opportunity to review those. So if a seated student was also interested in this opportunity, it would replace a current elective in their course. It would put their counselor, the folks at their building. And in return, we would make a learning plan ourselves to determine transportation and assist with what might be missed during potentially travel to and from that outside location. So not an opportunity that perhaps we might see very frequent, but one the auditor wanted to make sure was accessible to all folks at the Oxford schools, not just our Virtual Academy. Do you have questions?
Any questions? Seeing none? And it's all in this packet as well, correct?
We wanted to click on the links, which pull up those community vendors and then what those are like, of courses are. So it could be a nearby facility for gymnastics class, for example.
Okay.
I think it's awesome.
There is quite a list of opportunities that we continue to bring through our Virtual Academy. And it is, it is education that fits the needs of families, but it also is an educational experience that, from an administration perspective, is and why don't you say a little, it's quite different than what is experienced in the seated environment. Because of all the different opportunities that are out there, you have to make sure that it's, you're vetted and all of our partners are vetted. It is a machine all of its own. And this is, these are all good opportunities for our students. So thank you very much. Mary?
And I, thank you. And I don't want to overlook, because Sam gets a lot of credit. When the auditor, when our outside auditors come back and tell us that we have no material deficiencies, that MDE comes back with no specific findings. And this is regarding student count for OVA, right?
It is. And we got to get some recognition to Barb, Maxine as well, people who come within the district who does an incredible job helping with the state, as well as open schools.
Fantastic. Well, thank you to Barb. And I just, I want to be sure that we call out the great things that are happening too. out the great things that are happening too. So we're, we're working hard, thank you to you and your team, to Barb and Steve, thank you very much. It's great to hear, nothing to fix.
Jan Schell and the OT certainly doing an outstanding job. This includes, you know, some of our hybrid locations outside of Oxford as well with those community vendors as well. So there's a lot of coordination, not just from OVA locally, but in our surrounding areas as well.
Which is a lot about relationship building and maintenance, so, thank you.
Absolutely. The second item I had was to review a quote for an automotive scissor lift in our auto shop here at the high school. This is an asset that we received from Equipment Distributors Incorporated and for those of you familiar with AutoTech, you're aware of the cost and expense of some of that equipment. So our CTE funds will be able to provide the means to meet this quote, which is quite hefty, it's worth $39,226.86. This is a lift that will replace a current lift that's not in working and proper order right now. And so in order for us to be in compliance and to make sure we receive that compliance with our yearly inspection, we do need to get that replaced. The current lift is quite old and maintenance on that particular lift with the parts are just now no longer available. And so we worked with EDI through, as a regional distributor, as well as through some of our maintenance and our company inspection. And so they were able to pull up a quote for us, which supports the Hunter equipment we currently have in there and they have other equipment that they've been providing as well. The particular lift that we have supports some of the other supplementary equipment, which is Hunter, and that's why we picked out this particular one.
What was the price on that again?
Forty-three.
Thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. That place is, is really set by Hunter and so EDI as that distributor, they're generally have flexibility on that cost, our ability to work through them because they also help with our inspections and they help as being a distributor to us, makes it a pretty easy and good partnership for us to come in and quickly get that done and then also helping us meet that inspection.
I'm just going to make a little correction there. I'm- Make a little correction there. The cost around the pieces and parts as well as the $500 trade-in value, the total cost will be forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine oh four on the invoice, is that correct, Steve?
Correct.
Thank you. Yeah, all, total.
That's just what I remembered as well, I was trying to find it quick.
Here you go.
Yeah, no, I saw it, I just-
I was thinking in that forty-two, forty-three thousand dollar range. It's important to point out and I, and I want to, Amanda asked the question because I'm thinking scissor lift as, you know, changing lights, you know, the scissor lift that you would use in that. So when you asked the question, it was, it was very appropriate because I'm not even thinking along that lines until the answer was given. It's for automotive program that we have here and it's used to lift vehicles and things like that. So when we see things like this, sometimes we have a, I even said, wow, forty-two thousand for a scissor lift, I think I can, we can rent those a lot, but if we're just changing lights, yeah. But I'm glad you asked the question because it was one that I had as well, so.
This is basically the one, you know, certainly I reached out to the less, our CFE and CTE coordinator in the district to get some background and information and have a conversation. But this is the industry standard lift, one that would support and allow us to raise diesel engine vehicles, which are a little more front load heavy. So this one is that industry standard. Of course, we're hoping that students who become completers, who finish the auto course sequence can get that ASE certification, which is a big reason why those students go into that program to then continue beyond Oxford High School. This lift allows them to work on the vehicles necessary to ultimately attain that certification.
Very good. Mary.
And to follow up to that, some time ago, and I haven't talked to anybody about it recently, we were able to do some basic certifications here still at the high school, is that still in place? The, I'm sorry?
Previously, it was, now it's ASE.
Okay, and we do that here in the high school?
Correct.
So our students who complete this program, because of things like this, they are able to take state certifications here, they don't have to drive to Lansing, they don't have to go through all that, they're able to do that here in our building.
Correct.
That's fantastic.
As a member to the industry following post-secondary graduation.
Fantastic, thank you.
Any further questions?
Will they get it installed this academic year or do you think it would, like if we approve it at the next meeting when it comes around, what's the lead time and installation time and?
I don't have the exact date of the next inspection. I only have that inspection is this year, so we would want to, if it is approved, then we can move forward with the purchase and get that installed.
Okay. Okay, business and maintenance. Mr. Barna.
Good evening, I want to welcome publicly all of our new trustees, welcome to the district, look forward to working with you and obviously our good old superintendent, Dr. Mark, look forward to working with you as well. So welcome. On the agenda this evening is just a repeat of what I discussed at our December meeting and that is the purchase of a vehicle for our district's safety director and that is a 2022 GMC and so again, that is up for your vote for this evening.
Real quick, Sam, if, and I don't know if all three of our new trustees were at the previous board meeting, but can you bring them up to speed on how we bid that out, how we get, how we get to this price?
So, this is a consortium purchase, it's called MyDeal and so there's a select group of dealerships across the state that actually implement this program for municipalities and quasi-governmental entities such as school districts to purchase vehicles at a competitively bid price. And again, it is called MyDeal, so it's administered through the state. And so this purchase is at a set price and it's a very good price, especially if you have all recently looked at cars in the past year and a half or two. This particular dealer was gracious enough to save this vehicle for us and waiting for the board to make a decision on this purchase because of the demand that's out there and the lack of supply specifically related to the lack of chips that are still out there in the supply chain. So just wanted to bring that up as well. But that's where the, this particular vehicle is coming from, that fleet of MyDeal vehicles.
Okay. And just so we're also aware, this is a vehicle that will stay in district, it's not for the employee to take to and from work. The employee would come to the district with their own vehicle, the employee would use that vehicle to do their job that they would do on a regular basis here within a district. End of the day, they get in their own personal vehicle and they go home. There was some discussion, if I recall, about do we, don't we put security on it, put a wrap on it? That's really not for our discussion, but I just wanted the new trustees to understand that these are things that, it wasn't just, oh, let's get a vehicle, we want to make sure that we're doing it in a, in a way and fashion that we're getting the best price and we're doing what fits what our needs are and it's not just, we're going to buy a vehicle. And we can use this vehicle for a number of other things, should we need it.
Should we need it, I mean, it would definitely be something that we could consider, again, but this would be for the sole purposes as of right now for our director of safety and security to use on a daily basis.
Should we put the motion on the floor and then continue discussing?
Yeah, let's do that. I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed, but why don't you go ahead and, James, you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I can make the motion. Move to approve the purchase of the 2022 GMC Terrain from Todd Windsor Buick GMC of Westland for the price of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Is there support? Support, Dr. Reese. Now a discussion, anybody else have discussion? We'll start with ladies first, Amanda.
Thank you. So I just want to reiterate for, you know, the public that may not know, I asked a lot of questions about this and one of the biggest factors in purchasing this vehicle, as Sam explained to me, is that we cannot put district badging, correct, on his personal vehicle for insurance reasons. So the only way to do that is to purchase the vehicle and from a safety and awareness aspect, right?
That's absolutely the case. Again, Mr. Berger has contacted multiple insurance providers, including his existing provider, and they were unable to provide him with coverage if we so choose to put our badging on that vehicle from a liability standpoint. So it really is the avenue that we feel, felt or feel we need to take, if we do want badging on the vehicle.
Right.
And again, that is like a best practice in regards to from a safety component, you know, you want your current or local police force to realize that your vehicle is there and the individual in that vehicle is someone that needs to be there as well, so it is again, it's something that's necessary, we feel.
Right, and then you did also mention that it would be probably a magnetic sticker that's removable so that if the direction changes and you want to use it for something else, you're not misidentifying?
That's, that's the case, I mean, it's really the preference, I believe, from our safety executive director as well as our director, I believe, is a magnetic sticker.
Okay, and then over the lifetime of this, it actually will save money as opposed to the stipend that is currently provided, is projected?
It's projected, I mean, again, it's, there's a lot of factors, obviously, just like your own personal car, when you choose to dispose of a vehicle, what the vehicle's worth in ten years and, you know, frankly, I don't see a lot of heavy use of this vehicle in terms of high mileage and, you know, you can't even know where, we have a fair amount of thorough roads in the district, you know, the vast majority, in my opinion, of this vehicle's use is going to be on paved roads. So again, I feel light uses in order for this vehicle for the most part, you know, I can see this vehicle lasting quite a few years and so, you know, which really, that present value of something like this is, you know, it's very positive when you look at it versus a stipend, which, you know, at the end, you don't have anything in return as an asset in the end.
Right, okay, thank you.
James.
I'm all set. She actually took care of what I wanted to ask.
Yeah, and I think I just want to reiterate that it is best practice, public, private organizations of various different sizes own their own security vehicles, they don't expect employees to use their own personal vehicles. You could go to any academic center, hospital, you know, setting and see, even Chrysler GM, their security vehicles are, you know, pronounced and they are owned by the organization.
Very good. Mary.
I have a quick one. Thank you for the write-up, for the financial write-up, Sam. So we can, we can also see, you know, the bottom line, taking into account what everybody else has already said, because I think even moving forward, if, if it was, as time goes on, that stipend would have to go up anyway just with inflation and then having no asset in return. And I think that price in today's market is a, sadly, it's a pretty darn good price. That is a four-wheel-drive vehicle, right, a Terrain?
Correct, small wheel-drive vehicle.
Yeah, I think that's a really good price in today's market, so thank you, and thank you for the, for the write-up, the financial write-up, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right. Anybody else? Well, and if we do need to make oil, do oil changes, we now, sounds like we have a scissor lift to lift it and-
It's under warranty, however, so at least for the first 36,000 miles.
Yes, right. All right, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've had motion, support, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 13, human resources, there is nothing on the agenda, but-
No, we have that on the agenda, so you could welcome that.
I was gonna, that was, but if you'd like to, since you're the boss, go ahead.
No, I'm not the boss.
Oh yes, you are. First, Lori Ballard, when David, Dr. Pass left and Lori Ballard, one of our employees, stepped into the district, or stepped into the role of human resources and she did a fantastic job, so again, just as we thanked Anita, we need to, we would be remiss if we didn't do the same for the job that Lori Ballard did. I don't see her here, but it is a little bit bright, so if you're here, thank you very much. But the good thing is, is we got Riley Reed back, or Ryan Reed. And Ryan was in our human resource department for a while and did a lot of great things and she left us and then decided to come back. And so Ryan is our, our new HR assistant superintendent in charge of human resources, so welcome back and I, as I told you the other day, I'm really super excited that you are back here because there's been a lot of employees that you have helped on a number of different things and that office is really happy to have you back as well, so. All right? And those are for you because it's not for me. Safety and school operations, Dr. Williman.
Good evening. First up is going to be displayed on the screen, but it is our school of choice recommendations, this will be our first reading and then go to our next one, so I'm going to scroll down. Willingat first semester trimester, this is for the 2023-2024 school year, developmental kindergarten through ninth grade, it'd be unlimited, unlimited schools of choice enrollment will open March 1st and will close on August 14th. For 10th and 11th grade, unlimited to Ivy Health Science Engineering Academy, Dance Conservatory, Early College, and this would be unlimited schools of choice enrollment, which will open on March 1st, 2023 and close on August 14th. And then developmental kindergarten through 12th grade, unlimited, Oxford Virtual Academy, unlimited schools of choice enrollment, which will again, open on March 1st, 2023 and the date that it closes will be in a few days, it runs out on August 18th, 2023. Yes.
So all the other dates are the 14th, why the change on the developmental kindergarten? Is it, is it just this?
For the virtual academy?
Yes, for the, I'm sorry, it's for OVA. Is that because OVA, is it, is it a state? I guess I'm just curious why all of them would be the 14th and then we had OVA just a few days later. Is that something that we consent or is it a state requirement?
I would have to talk to people at accounting and get back to you on that.
Okay, perfect. You can, you can let-
Okay, I'll let Dr. Mark do it.
Very good, thank you.
Our next item is going to be a safety update. First, I would like to add, now that we hired our national security specialist, Robert Backman, he is actually right over there. He is coming to us with 25 years' experience with the Madison Heights Police Department where he retired as a sergeant and he was over operations. He also holds a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Western Michigan University. So we onboarded him last week, he spent some time in the high school and then moved over to the middle school today, where he's been running very well. So we just wanted to give a face to the name that was there. The next item on the safety update is the district safety committee meeting, which will be held on January 19th. This is co-chaired by myself and the school safety administrator. Currently, this, it's made up of various district employees as well as the high school principal, middle school principal and elementary representative and then various area agencies, the police departments, the sheriff's department, our city manager, they're all invited to be part of that. And the purpose of this committee is to provide leadership and support in the implementation of the safety and security practices for this district, the emergency operation plans and to really evaluate the prevention, protection, mitigation, response and recovery activities done under the safety umbrella. And we do currently have all of the, who started on as a representative.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure that you, that I was attending that. Mm-hmm. Quick question.
Yes.
That is open for the community to attend, but only to observe, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And will these be updated as you stated earlier? This will be part of that update?
The work of the committee as. Though I've reminded you all to turn on this green light and I haven't remembered it once tonight. Um, the work of the committee as it relates to that recovery plan, yeah, will be part of the reports that you're getting.
Okay. Thank you.
And then additionally, so the committee, safety subcommittee, on January 26th. This is continuation of a committee that parents were able to apply for last spring. There was a meeting in August with the expectation that there would be more meetings. So, um, school safety administrator and I wanted to honor that work as well as those who applied to be part of that committee. Um, so we will be moving forward with that and really looking at listening to parents concerned as well as updating them on the safety. We do have two representatives from the parent safety committee that also serve on our district safety committee.
Okay.
And then we also, uh, this is a request for proposal bid process for the contracted security company. Um, as all of you are aware, the school safety administrator and I started part with committee there, and we have been able to establish, um, expectations that we have for our contracted services. And because of that and, and developing expectations for the employees themselves, we, we are wanting to go through a formal bid process for security companies, although this is not something that is typically done in the name of communication and transparency, as Dr. Markovich, um, has, has said multiple times. We want to make sure that everyone is aware of the process. So that will be going out, um, for the formal bid process this week. Um, and it really will allow us to look at that the standard of expectations that have been set within my department are what our security company are, are performing at. Um, ESS, our current security company, will be able to submit a bid. Um, but this is the best way we have with current standards that we have set to ensure that we have that security company that is meeting our needs.
When the, uh. When the proposal is ready, uh, to be sent out, we will be emailing in my Friday report to you, uh, that, how to access that RFP so that you can see what those standards are. And, um, this is just best practice. I mean, now that you have people in place and they've been able to look at, uh, industry standards and where those industry standards are, uh, it, it behooves us as a district, if we're going to be at the highest level of safety and security we can be, that we, um, ask for companies to submit proposals to meet those standards and we'll see what happens. Um, we hope to bring you a recommendation, possibly as early as February, uh, one of your February meetings, and then we would roll out a transition, um, somewhere 20 to 30 days, uh, after that. And during the transition period, it may be that you actually are employing two companies to, uh, fulfill our security needs while one ramps up and one, uh, transitions out. Or if ESS submits a proposal and our current company is the company that we actually, um, uh, hired to do that security, then, um, they would need some time to probably ramp up as well to meet the higher standards. So we'll keep you apprised as this process moves forward and, uh, let you know when we're ready to bring a recommendation to you. And I, I appreciate the work that has been done through that safety security office. The standards are sound. They're very good. And if we can get a company to meet them, we will definitely elevate, um, uh, our services up in that area quite a bit.
Very good.
Okay. The next item is the Navigate 360 management program. On the November 22nd meeting, Mr. Todd Jarvis presented information about Navigate. Um, we are now at a point where we will sneak in the process where that's rolled out. For those who may be unfamiliar with what Navigate 360 is, it is where we house our documentation for blood assessment and suicide assessment. So we will be meeting with Navigate 360, the company itself, to discuss the training and, and what we're going to do with the different, um, teams in place to ensure the proper training for that. We're also going to be in contact with another district that uses it to talk through the rollout. Um, I come from a district that uses Navigate 360, so I'm, I'm very excited about this transition. Um, and I really think our admin and the rest of our, our behavior process and management teams will be onboarded with this. But the biggest thing with any new thing that we're going to bring in is the process of rolling it out, how we're going to provide that professional learning and then the ongoing support for our staff with that. Um, and this will be, uh, it, it's really just going to be one of those things that will, will again help with the transparency and communication. It is one of the data points that we would then be able to, to show you in a different way than we already have been.
I'm also very excited about this because data, data, data is as important to me as communicate, communicate, communicate. And, uh, this is one of those, uh, applications that will make that data collection, uh, uh, easier for our school district to do across all grade levels and across all employee categories. And, um, I think that data will speak to us as we continuously try to improve what we're doing in, in this area of student support.
Do you have a general timeframe for when you expect that to be completely rolled out?
I cannot give you a specific one until we're able to meet with Navigate and work with their schedule and then our, our BTM teams to be able to ensure we're having the training in place.
Okay.
But sooner rather than later is the best way that I can do it. I have a plan, but until I can finalize that, I would hate to give you wrong information.
Sure. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions?
My last item.
There we go.
Uh, is, it's in, as in what's in your board packet, is, it's a review of the camera update for transportation. Currently, our cameras do not feed back to us. We have to review as soon as we can download anything.
Correct.
This would allow us, much like the cameras in the school, to have access for the staff that needs to have that access, um, to be able to access cameras as needed. It would also allow our transportation department to track our buses internally, um, in the case of any sort of emergency. Um, and so much like with the car discussion earlier, this is just the, the first bringing of the material to you and then we will go down in the next meeting. And this was work that was started in the spring. Um, and so I'm just continuing on what I already started the discussion on.
Mr. Whitney?
Just to, uh, I guess clarify, so this would enable live feed of the buses?
Yes. And that is the breadth point that you have is for all 47 buses in the district.
And would somebody be review, like reviewing it live or it would be something that they would typically go back to if there was an issue?
It could be used both ways.
But at this, okay.
In my experience, um, at the tran- and I can always speak to previous districts, like someone at the transportation department had that up, much like we have with our, our campus-based security cameras. But then of course, if something were to happen, we could let.
Correct.
We could get that information to campus administrator, whoever needed it.
Thank you.
Is that information recording outward of the bus or inward of the bus?
Outside of the bus. It would be more focused on what's going on inside the bus.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure, because, you know, there's, I, obviously accidents happen and if that would be able to record that as well, that would be something that would be.
That is something that I could talk to the company about if people would like me to do.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions? Yep.
I don't know how our current one is set up, but it might be interesting if we could utilize that for like a dash cam, something that we could pull that data afterwards from in a, in an instance for a, for an accident, but then use this for real-time monitoring of the behavior of the children.
I can definitely reach out.
I don't know. Like I said.
I have one of those like that on my car, so.
Yeah, for sure.
I know what you're talking about.
For sure.
No, that's a good thought. I mean, if we already have some, if we already have an asset and we can utilize it, maybe we think about ways to, to make that happen. So, a good thought.
And it is working with the same company that we currently have equipped. So it would just be upgrading the equipment we have. So it's worth that conversation.
I think Ann would like to speak, I think Ann would like to speak.
A little bit, um, Ann, our transportation director.
Ann, why don't you come on up? Because I, I don't know that we'd be able to hear you. So this is Ann Whedon. She's, uh, head of our transportation department and I think she might be the one that actually calls the snow days. Ah, I know. She lets you know.
Trust me, it, you will still call the snow days and I want everyone to listen. Snow days are not my fault there.
Uh, no, what I would like to explain is we, our full-size buses, including our orthopedic buses, currently have four cameras on each bus. Three of those cameras, um, are for the interior and they look down into, uh, the seats of the bus. One behind the driver, one midship, one towards the back of the bus. We get pretty good coverage. And then we do have, each bus is also equipped with a forward-mounted camera that goes out the front window. So you can see, so if there's an accident. So, so to answer your question, it's kind of already there. Uh, part of this system too, um, will also, um, lost my train of thought there for a minute. I'm sorry. Um, allow us to access those cameras without having to wait until the bus comes back to the bus garage, which we have to do, um, right now. And it also lets us know whether there's a camera that's not functioning properly. So we found that. So right now I check them like quarterly and we have bring each DVR into the bus garage, hook it up, and then, um, see it, make sure everything is working. We've had situations, you can have middle school or high school where they'd ask for a view from a camera and we did not know it wasn't functioning and we didn't have that view. So this will help with that and allow us to give us a signal and know right away when that camera's malfunctioning.
Very good.
I will let you know, the gentleman I've been talking to, it's, our cameras are REI cameras, radio engineering, and, um, Mr. Wagner has been very helpful with the product and it's REI, our number as well.
Okay.
And it will incorporate everything that we have right there.
Thank you.
Are any buses only have two cameras in each one? So, and they're no forward-facing. We didn't have a place where we could mount it where the state expected it was standing.
Okay. Thank you, Ann.
That's everything I have. So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no, I'm not going to break. Okay. We're going to go to, uh, the unscheduled audience participation portion of our meeting. Um, we have the cards, so we'll just get right into it. We're not going to break. It was three of them, so we'll go right into it. Um, Kareen? There we go. And as you're coming up, as we explained earlier, in case you weren't here, there's, uh, once you hit about two minutes and 50 seconds, the yellow light will come on and, and then once three minutes goes, try to wrap up your thought there. Thank you.
Um, I'm here in reaction to the announcement during the holiday break that Oxford School District seeks to dismiss the lawsuit. Um, since the tragedy, I feel an obligation as a mom and Oxford School's community member to the victims and their families, especially Tate, Madison, Hannah, and Justin. While the school's primary goal, primary goal is to educate students, another priority is providing a safe environment. It's a responsibility enforced in federal, state, and local laws. Schools have the responsibility to keep a safe environment for all students. Schools or districts can be found liable if evidence proves the event, the event could have reasonably, reasonably been prevented, either because officials had reason to believe it would take place or if their response protocol wasn't sufficient, sufficient, sufficiently implemented. In the case of OHS on November 29th and 30th, certain officials did not adequately address signs that the shooter could commit violence and that they failed to follow our threat assessment policies prior to the days and on the day leading up to the event. That means the response protocol wasn't sufficiently implemented. I'd like to point out, in the month leading up to November 30th, parents and students were notifying the school about threats and concerns in general. That means school officials definitely had reason to believe it could and would happen. Parents and students reportedly were already concerned about that, and I know I was. I also know a mother of a daughter in the high school who reported, um, being worried about that day. She knew something was going to happen November 30th and asked her mother if she could stay home. From that, I would like to echo what has been said before. All staff who engaged with the shooter on 11/29 and 11/30 should be placed on immediate leave while a real third-party review is conducted and concluded. The district may mistake. The district did not execute or implement its policies, and those are policies that were on the website. I have watched this board for over a year not taking their role in the tragedy seriously. I've seen the families of the victims stare at, stared at by the board with blank faces as they plead to you for help. Please stop with the blank faces and the blank responses when people are pouring their hearts out to you. I have been here when Tate's father was here. I've been here when Hannah's father was here. I have been here when Justin's mother was here and Keegan's mother. I cannot stand, I just can't stand.
Okay. You, you've had your three minutes. Can you wrap it up? Thank you.
I think, I think the school has failed those families who had their children murdered in this building. I would love to see that change. Tonight, as I watch you, above you, the Oxford letter profiles.
Okay. Thank you. It's three minutes. It's, it's been three minutes. It's three minutes. I'm trying to be polite, but we're. Yep. Thank you. Mark Gillum.
Jamie, um, yellow goes at one minute.
Okay.
Well, happy new year and welcome to all the board members. And, um, uh, it's, it's good to see you. We've got five out of eight that are in the number six. I think that's a good dream for our community. Um, and I wish you all the best and I thank you all here, especially the new people, um, as we work through this. Uh, we have some, some serious issues still a hand that will need to be resolved and, uh, there's some ideas of ways you could earn trust in this community. Uh, Dan, uh, you could restore it back to five minutes so we can talk for five minutes. You know, the day the families, the victims' families came here, you guys instituted your reduction from five minutes to three minutes. Um, I think it's a slap in the face for the community and, um, it's something that easily change. Give us two more minutes for the same that we had before. And I believe, um, administrative leave for, um, the parties that were involved with Ethan on November 30th. Uh, it's not a very big crowd. Um, I think out of respect to all the victims in this community, um, HR, I, I don't know how you tell me you're not in charge. I tell the superintendent's in charge and Ann goes back and forth to play the blame game. But why don't we fire what I just put on the minister of leave for Mr. Wolf, who tried to silence this community who brought that concern, for Hopkins and for EJAC who failed to notify law enforcement? Why are they still employees? Why have they been, not only employees, but they've been given new jobs in this administration? So as long as you continue in that path, we know for sure we can trust you. And, and then the last thing I have, um, is could we move the memorial for Hannah, Tate, Justin, Madison from the corner over by the spirit ticket booth in the, in the center here, over to the entrance, um, to the right of the main office? There's a blank wall there. I think we should feature each one of their faces on that wall so we have to see them every time we come in this building. Is that something you could get done?
We've already, the, the committee has already worked on that and, and previous, the previous board president said no. And.
The previous board president just admitted that you guys are lying to us. Um, so then I guess everything's been, the last thing is, um, you know, Heather, you're out slandering families and people who don't agree with you.
No personal attacks. Okay. Just wrap up. No personal attacks, okay, just wrap up your point.
She's talking crap about us. Why don't you leave us out, Dan? Why haven't you resigned?
You know what, Mark?
Wait, listen, I've got three minutes. You're interrupting me, why don't you resign? You admitted to this community that you lied to us. You were there, it was your failure. You know, four children are dead, our community's scarred. We don't trust you, we don't want you here.
May I, Mr. President, please speak to the board?
Absolutely.
Yeah. As I said before, I am trying and I will continue to try to understand the depth of feeling and the depth of loss that's occurred here. But I also want to remind people that we're an educational organization. We ask our students every day, we heard in the presentation this morning, we ask our students every day to act civilly toward one another, to express their opinions with respect. And we cannot model for those kids any different kind of behavior here at these meetings, either by board members or by staff or by the public that come to talk to us. So, while I respect and honor everyone's right to come and speak, I must ask that it be done with civility and that we model what we expect of our students. And if ever it turns uncivil, I'm going to ask the board to adjourn the meeting and not call it back to order until it returns to civility.
All right. Cory Bailey.
Trust, integrity, honesty, and accountability, these are four of the qualities that you have listed on the school website under values. Values that you as a board are going to exemplify to the administration and values that that administration will then trickle down to our students. Mr. Gullis, under you sat at this very table, read a lengthy apology to the families of the victims and to the community at large for not being more honest, transparent, and vocal in the early days and months after the shooting. The day after you were voted back into that presidency, you promised to do the same thing, to be more honest, more transparent with the community, and yet you lied. Mr. Donnelly and I resigned after sitting through a difficult meeting where we all learned the truth, but we cannot act due to being in the minority. You learned the truth, Heather learned the truth, Mary learned the truth. Instead of taking action, you would rather hold out for this report from Guidelys that seems to keep getting pushed further and further down the line. The longer you wait, the more the community, staff, and students know you cannot be trusted. I made a request to address this board and ask that you release the two of us from the Open Meetings Act restrictions as to what was discussed in closed session as well as the restrictions from the attorney-client privilege so that we could speak truthfully and completely during our recent depositions. You replied that the board would not be lifting this and you denied my request to speak to the new board. I asked again and I was denied simply because I failed to add my home address to the request. Classic move. You and the other three rounded the horn and made a decision outside of a public meeting. I requested again with all of my information and you said that you guys had already made up a decision, you would not lift the restrictions, so my addressing the board was a moot point, your words. Again, you denied my request. Since you are content violating the Open Meetings Act yourself by rounding the horn and conducting business outside of the public, I'm asking again. We have thousands of children and hundreds of teachers that want to know where we failed them, how we are making sure this never happens again, and ensure them that they will feel safe once again in their classrooms. I sat in many hours during my first deposition, simply replying that yes, I do know the facts, yes, I do know the truth, but since it was discussed in closed session, it must be hidden there forever. I am asking again to be released from these restrictions. The board is the client and you have the authority to grant this. Your values read integrity, honesty, accountability, and trust, and you have the opportunity to lead by example and allow Mr. Donnelly and I the opportunity to show our integrity, to speak honestly and completely, to allow you, once again, or for once, hold people accountable and again, restore trust. It is time for you to stop this cover-up.
Okay, we have our list of, that's the last one, we have our list of scheduled activities. Is there any clarification?
I'm sorry, you have the, I could be the twin that way.
Here. No, no clarification? Final board comments? We'll start down, Amanda.
So, I'm actually a little unclear if I should be speaking right now on comments or other, but I...
That's final board comments, whatever your thought is on, on, you know, meeting ideas, thoughts.
Okay, so, there's something I just, I would like to bring to the board to discuss, potentially to change the format of the agenda and allow for two audience participation times, one in the beginning and one at the end. Both three minutes, but essentially, when we vote on things, I would like to hear the community's input first. I would like to hear it before we vote on things rather than afterwards when we've already voted and a lot of times the community feels like what's the point if they've already voted? I want to hear those opinions first. I want to hear what the community thinks about it and then at the end, give them another opportunity for things outside of the agenda that they would like to, to come to us with.
Anybody else? James, we'll just go right down the row, James.
Well, first and foremost, being first meeting and getting the first meeting kind of jitters out. I appreciate everyone's patience as I learn the formality and things. It's not the first board I sat on, but definitely it's not going to be nearly the easiest, to say the least. Onboarding is still ongoing and as myself and the other new board members newly elected get up to speed, I just would appreciate a little patience and appreciate the help and teamwork and clear, open, free-flowing of communication amongst the board members and the superintendent. And thus far, since Dr. Markovich has come in on Monday, it has been great. It's been a flood of knowledge and stuff and I look forward to more, to be more educated and to know, and speak intelligently going forward, so thank you.
Mary.
I just wanted to welcome our new board members and please keep asking questions. There are a lot of questions to be asked and sometimes when we are involved in some of the things that we are involved in, we forget that other people may not have the information. So, please keep asking and welcome to our new board members.
Mary, Mike? You good? Heather? Okay. I just, real quick, want to point out one thing because, you know, the accusation made that we rounded the horn or called board members and broke the Open Meetings Act could be further from the truth. The reason that they didn't get a delay, they got a delay in the opinion, I spoke with several attorneys not involved in the case regarding client privilege. Every single person, every single attorney said in no time that they've ever practiced law, that they've ever waived attorney-client privilege. That's outside of whether it be schools or any type of law that they practiced. The opinion that I responded to was written by Julia from Collins and Blaha, who is one of the district's attorney, who their specialty is open meetings act and school law. The board holds the privilege, not any single person. If I walk away from the board, it's the privilege of the board, I cannot release that. And I'm quite sure that Mr. Bailey and Mr. Donnelly's attorney knows the path to waiving attorney-client privilege would have been done through a court order. We can't waive that. That's all I wanted to say about that topic. Anybody else have any comments? Anything on the other? Okay. It is nine, nine, it's 8:50, meeting's adjourned.